Good evening, we're gonna call the LaPorte County Council, LaPorte County Commissioners' Joint Workshop to order. You'd like to get started?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. My name is Pat Cicero. I'm a detective captain with LaPorte County Sheriff's Office. I'm the chief of detectives. I want to thank you and the commissioners for allowing this opportunity to present this ordinance proposal that we have entitled, "LaPorte County Precious Metal, Valuable Metal, Scrap Metal, Pawn, and Secondhand Retail Ordinance." I also want to thank Sheriff Boyd, our administrative staff with the sheriff's office, and our prosecutor's office for their help and guidance as we prepared this presentation for you today. Also, I'd like to introduce detectives Aaron Bannick and James Lear, who are going to do the presentation on a PowerPoint that was prepared for you guys today. I just want to talk a few moments about property crimes, something that we are dealing with and continue to deal with and have always dealt with. And property crimes is a crime that is very common amongst all jurisdictions throughout the United States, if not the most prominent crime in the United States. Traditionally, property crimes are extremely hard to resolve. A lot of times, there's not enough evidence. It's not like a crime against a person where there's usually a witness or the victim themselves can identify their perpetrator. We tend to have a lower clearance rate because of that. But we do our very best to try to get the suspect with forensics and whatever we can utilize at her disposal. But we are able to solve crimes on many occasions because we can discover the property at a later time through various means. And this ordinance that we had prepared, at least the proposal that we prepared for the council and the commission to look at, addresses an issue that we've had with pawn shops and scrap yards and secondhand retailers for a very long time. And this is an ordinance that has been, that is similar to ordinances throughout Indiana, not in all jurisdictions, but we're hoping that we'll adopt with the proposal we prepared. I think it's also important to note to the commissioners and the council, the correlation between property crimes and narcotics. Quite frankly, property crimes are perpetrated by suspects who are drug users. And they need some type of funding to purchase their narcotics. And we believe that if we can somehow stem property crimes by solving them and charging perpetrators with property crimes by finding the property, we can also stem some of the narcotics investigations and some of the overdose as well. So there's a direct correlation. But I don't want to sit here and talk about this whole thing. I want to present, I want to actually have the detectives, who are experts at property crime investigations, present this to you in a PowerPoint presentation as to showing you our approach in utilizing a institution, a program, a company called Leads Online, which we have been using for a while. Okay?
Good evening, and thank you again for granting us this time. My name's Detective James Lear. This is Detective Aaron Bannick. Together between myself, Detective Bannick, Captain Cicero, 47 years of law enforcement experience. I may be only contributing six of that, but in that short amount of time, I've become very passionate about what I do, and that's mainly investigating property crimes. And one of the things we'd like to do is make it impossible for, or not impossible, but a lot harder for criminals to conduct their business in LaPorte County. But full disclosure, I think we need to get something out of the way since it is Monday Night Football. Detective Bannick unfortunately is a Cowboys fan. Yeah, you didn't see that one earlier. So, as Captain Cicero alluded, we utilize an online system called Leads Online. To sum it up nice and easy, it's an online database that hundreds, and if not probably thousands at this point, law enforcement agents use. Thousands of businesses use. It's active with national updated information 24/7/365. Most pawn shops use it. Somebody will bring it out into the pawn shop. The pawn shop will then upload all that information to Leads Online. Most pawn shops will include photographs, serial numbers, model numbers. We can then go back and search Leads Online and find that property. Sometimes we can do it by serial number if we have it, but we can do it as simple as searching by make, model, sometimes even color. Leads Online is a phenomenal tool, and they support law enforcement, and they also support businesses. It's not only been used to solve property crimes, but they've solved murders. And the FBI has used Leads Online for direct investigations we learned through the Las Vegas mass shooting as well as the Pulse nightclub shooting. They used information developed from Leads Online in those investigations. So first, I'd like to give you kind of a rundown of how a normal burglary investigation works right now. Unfortunately, you get burglarized. So if you think about your house, your property, do you know the model and serial number on your television? Or firearm? Do you know the exact karat weight of your wedding ring? These are the kind of things normal people don't know. And unfortunately, if you want to make the stuff easy to find, that's the kind of stuff we need. But it can be done a lot easier. So you of course gotta call the police. Report's gotta be generated. As much information as we can is usually put in that report. An investigation will ensue. That's when we get it. We do of course do our follow-ups. And one of the first things in property crime we check is gonna be Leads Online. And we do, we luck out. A lot of times, we will find property, and we can go get it. We go to the pawn shops, we go to the scrap yards, we go to wherever it is. We take pictures of it, and we'll come to your house and be like, "Hey, is this your ring? Is this your television?" Of course, how do I get it back? Well, unfortunately, you have to buy back your own property. So you as a victim have had your peace of mind taken, and now you have to go to a pawn shop and buy back your own TV, buy back your own wedding ring. Well, last year Detective Bannick and I, over several conversations, decided we were done victimizing victims. So in 2018, we stopped. We went through the legal process. We started getting search warrants and serving these businesses with search warrants and seizing property. Through that process, we may have ruffled a few feathers, but we're not victimizing our victims again. So if we're getting these search warrants, and you know everybody's, if it's working, well, why do we need an ordinance? Right now, LaPorte County, we have three pawn shops. And they do all three report to Leads Online. However, there's no accountability if they choose not to report to Leads Online. Or, in a case I had last year, "Sir kinda last four, five, three, one, two." That is what they put. This is a business in LaPorte County, put as the serial number for a television. When I, I was lucky enough that victim actually saved their box, and I had the complete serial number. When I entered that serial number into Leads Online, this did not show up because "Sir kinda last four, three, five, five, three, one, two" isn't the serial number of that television. The serial number kinda has the last four digits of five, three, one, two. Luckily, I knew who the suspect was. I was able to search by his name, and then I found him. "Hey, my victim's missing a 55-inch TV," and I was able to verify it. I obtained a search warrant. I recovered the TV as well as three other TVs that that gentleman stole. And this is the response I got. "You keep coming in here with search warrants, I'm gonna stop reporting." Unfortunately, that was one pawn shop. And then a second recently said the same thing. "You keep coming in here with search warrants, we're just gonna stop reporting." Now, if they stop reporting to Leads, that's fine. We'll have to go back and we'll have to do it the old-fashioned way. We have to go there every day, check their receipts. A lot of manpower, a lot of time. And then our success rate is gonna plummet. We also have scrap yards. Leads Online is paid for by LaPorte County Prosecutor's Office. We were, we put in our request to have that license upgraded to a basically more powerful version of Leads that searches scrap yards in preparation for this ordinance. But luckily, we have access to Sancho County and a few other counties that do report. So we have three scrap yards in this county that provide no documentation for any transaction under $100. Last summer, an investigation, we had, through confession, said, "Hey, we stole this, we stole some scrap." It was from, it did get some news coverage. It was from the gentleman down in the Kingsbury Industrial Park. He was a 73-year-old Vietnam veteran. A bunch of kids went down there, stole a bunch of scrap metal from his property. The vic, the suspects told us and then through an interview that we got $118 at Paul's Auto Yard. I went to Paul's Auto Yard. They were like, "We don't have that ticket. We can't find it anywhere." Luckily, Marge has a great memory. The lady behind the desk said, "Wait, $118? Yep, I know where that ticket's at." And dug through about 200 transaction receipts and handed me that. Now, I don't know if you can see up the customer. It took some magnifying glass and some, you know, interpretation for me to realize this says Green Ranger. They drove a green Ford Ranger. That's all we had to identify this stolen property, was Green Ranger, $118, and a date and a time, of course. So, why we need this is of course we can help solve crimes. But to me, what's more important is restoring peace of mind. Because there's nothing more important than talking to these victims and letting them know, "Hey, I found your property." And hey, guess what? We've also got the gentleman who took it behind jail, behind bars, he's in jail. Having that conversation with that victim saying, "I can sleep through the night again," or "I can finally stop jumping every time I hear that window rattle," is the best part of my job. We also want accurate and reliable records. Leads Online transmits nationwide. So we can be on the forefront of this, having complete accurate records of every transaction for pawn shops, resale transactions, and scrap metal in our county. And that way, we can share it with other agencies. So if somebody from Illinois, Michigan, Sancho County, we are crossroads. How many highways do we have crossing in this county? Unfortunately, criminals come and go. So we can actually help countless other agencies. And we want the criminals to take their business elsewhere. It's not gonna stop the issue, but we can force them maybe to stop and reconsider thinking about stealing and conducting their business in LaPorte County. So, it's roughly 2,000 words. It's five pages long. So I'm gonna boil it down to you the best I can in some simple bullet points. We've divided it up into pawn shops, precious metals, valuable metals, and scrap metals, and secondhand retailers. It's five different subsections of businesses, all clearly defined in there. Precious and valuable metals are gonna be considered your jewels, gold, your silver, platinum, emeralds, rubies, diamonds. And your valuable metals are your copper, your platinum, you know, your highly valuable scrap metals. And then of course, your scrap yards. Just your scrap yards. What we're gonna require is accurate reporting daily. And we have it broken down into some very simple, easy steps. And we're gonna require photographs to be taken of people and their property. This is a standard feature available on Leads Online. Unfortunately, none of our businesses that use Leads in this county participated. We've had great success in Illinois where it's mandatory. And we get pictures of the property, and the person saves us a trip of driving an hour when we have it all right there on Leads Online. And we're gonna require that the property be held for a short time. Now, these times that I'm gonna discuss here in a moment are based off other ordinances that are already ineffective out the state. So they're not unreasonable by any means, I feel. And of course, we're gonna ask for the release of any stolen property back to us. So as I said, right now, we have the three pawn shops operating in LaPorte County. Two in Michigan City, one in the city limits of LaPorte. The best thing is, they're already using Leads Online. So they require no additional training. We're gonna ask that accurate reporting be done daily. We're gonna be asked that photographs be taken of people and their property. And we're gonna ask that they hold property for 15 days before they sell it. Compared to other ordinances, this is very similar. 15 days gives us enough time to get an investigation going and everything verified. And we're gonna ask that they release the property. But in exchange for that, they are gonna be named as victims in any criminal case, and they will be eligible for restitution to get their loss. We're not out to victimize the victims, and we're of course not out to victimize the businesses operating in this county. Again, secondhand retailers, precious metal dealers, and valuable metal detailers, dealers. You're gonna operate in the same vein as a pawn shop. We have it broken down in there the same way for each business, but the stipulations will be the same. The major difference is gonna come to your scrap yards. They of course will have to report to Leads Online. It does not cost them anything, and of course, we'll help them. However, we can't expect a scrap yard to report every transaction to Leads Online. Every time somebody comes in with $5 in aluminum cans, that does not need to be reported to Leads Online. So what we did is we divided it into major and minor transactions. We're defining minor transaction kind of what their ruling standard is right now, under $100. What we're asking them to do is keep paper records with identification, which they don't require right now, what they brought in, and how much they paid for it. And we're asking that they require, retain that for a year. Anything over a major transaction, we're gonna ask them to report it like anything else on Leads Online. Same thing though, identification, what they brought in, how much was paid for it. And we're also asking if they use a car, which means if they weigh in on a scale in the car, they obtain that vehicle information as simple as, "Green Ford Ranger, Indiana license plate." Here we go, one, two, three. And to be fair, we're only gonna ask them to hold that property for 72 hours. I realize they are taking in tons and tons of tons of material each day. So it'd be very unreasonable to ask them to hold that for very, very long length of time. And again, releasing stolen property and getting restitution. We have built into the ordinance an annual inspection by the LaPorte County Sheriff's Office. It's very simple. We will choose a random day, and we'll take what was reported to Leads Online, and we'll show up to the business and say, "We'd like to see your paper transactions for that day, and see if they match up on Leads Online." It's a very simple process. We, based on other ordinances, their fines vary greatly. We figured $100 for the first offense within a calendar year was very fair. You know, we are there to help coach, help get this stuff done, help get it reported accurately. $500 for a second offense, and $1,500 for each additional. And that's all within a calendar year. We don't, we're not out to victimize these businesses, and it's not up, this isn't a money-making scheme for us. So we want this to be taken seriously. And if we go in there three, four, or five times, that's why we kind of upped it a little bit. Like, we're doing this to protect you. You need to take this seriously. So, I tried to step back and think of some things that some businesses would consider, you know, what's gonna be wrong with this? Well, it's, first thing, every business owner is their bottom line. Leads Online is free for all businesses to use. We pay for that license. It costs a business nothing to report to Leads Online. It's gonna be too complicated. Like I said, Leads Online has some of the best customer service I have ever encountered in my entire life. They are based in Dallas, Texas. All their phones ring to a person. Leads Online has already been contacted with us. They will help train these businesses, get them equipped, get them going. And myself, Detective Bannick, Captain Cicero are gonna make ourselves available for any business. This is any questions or issues uploading. We'll be there in a heartbeat to help them out. Nobody else is making us do this. Indiana, Sancho County, our neighbor, has very similar ordinance in effect right now. So does Fort Wayne in Indianapolis. So if Indianapolis can do it, there's no reason why we can't. And what's in it for me? Well, forcing the criminal element out of our county ensures you don't have to deal with it anymore. We make this a hard place to do business at, it's gonna be great for everybody involved. So to wrap everything up, I think this is a very progressive, forward-thinking approach that we can start taking an approach in LaPorte County. It's gonna send a clear message to criminals that we are gonna prosecute and take these crimes seriously. It's gonna reestablish a working relationship with these businesses again. Right now, there is a rift. I hate saying that, but we have a rift right now in this county between us and these businesses that shouldn't exist. We're all on the same team. They don't wanna take in stolen property, and we don't want property to get stolen. I think this is a great way to mend that fence. We're gonna create a fair system. Everything is clearly laid out. We're gonna be out to help these businesses get on board, get going, and we're gonna be there every step of the way. This isn't gonna be, "Here's your ordinance, you're done." If you have a question, I want them to call us. And implementation across all jurisdictions. I know I've talked about a lot of businesses that aren't, that aren't in the jurisdiction of the LaPorte County Council, LaPorte County Commission. I get that. However, we wanna get that passed for us, and then we're gonna start working in, get it passed in the city. We're gonna make this entire county not open for business for criminals. I've already spoken with the Westville Police Department, Trail Creek Police Department, Michigan City, and LaPorte. All very interested in how we're approaching this. And I foresee if it passes here, getting a lot of support from these other jurisdictions and making this county not open for business. So I appreciate your time and thank you again.
Thank you, I do. I have a question here.
Of course.
I don't see anything in there on a frequent flyer rule. So somebody keeps coming in with TVs. That's a frequent flyer. To me, that's a red flag. So I don't see anything in here that would help us address that.
Leads Online does. There's a setting inside the Leads Online. If they do adapt to that, like if somebody comes in more than three or four times a week, we get those hits on our computers like a little show on a system.
So it is, it is being counted for as long as the lead is input?
Yes. Yeah, as long as they're registering these people properly, so we know this guy's coming in. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gausse. Oh, sorry. Can you say, cost-wise, are you helping?
Are you helping them with the cameras?
My philosophy is, you know, everybody's got a cellphone, so everybody's got a camera. If they tell me they can't afford a camera, I have 10 cellphones lying around my house that I've had for, that I can't throw away. I'll gladly donate them to used cellphones. They have a digital camera.
Okay, so these cameras don't have to be hooked up to Leads Online or anything?
No, it's any camera they have.
Okay.
I worked at a scrap yard, and it, to me, I've seen everything else seem reasonable, but I know in a scrap yard, your space is limited. And especially with pollution laws and that, you don't try to go outside your area. 72 hours seems really strict on a scrap yard. And I said, generally, you throw the scrap in a big pile, and that's where it goes at because it's just, it's impossible to sort. Again, I worked at one. I don't know how we would ever have done that.
And you know, this is obviously a rough draft. We're open to interpretation. We're open to speaking with scrappies and palls and spectrum and find out a reasonable timeframe that allows us to get that information reported to us.
Have you ever gone to scrap yard? To take scrap, I mean, yourself?
Yep.
Okay. You know, it goes in these big piles and stuff. It's not something I can sit there and sort all out. So I'm just curious, but where you, where you think that might work at?
It works in Sancho County. What they generally do in Sancho County is as they pull in to get weighed, somebody comes out, takes a picture of the car.
Well, pictures are fine. I'm talking about 72 hours of keeping scrap. It's, it's, it seems almost impossible.
Keeping it separate from all the others.
It's, it's, you're very limited in space when you're running scrap yards.
And that may be a consolation we might have to. If it's unreasonable, you know, the last thing I wanna do is burden a business. And that, that's something that...
And I don't, I don't understand about the other businesses enough. I just worked this one. So I just know that it would have been impossible for us to do that kind of stuff.
That's the thing we wanna hear from you with this being a workshop, is let us know what you think.
So if you have, let's say if you're really busy and you got 50 customers come through, you got 50 piles of stuff for 72 hours, that's three days, so that's 150 piles of stuff. And then on the, after the 72 hours, on the fourth day, you can go, "Okay, now you can go take that 50 piles and pick them up," because...
I don't see it happening.
I understand what you're, I love the idea of, I love the idea of photographing, you know, the car, the vehicle, the stuff, getting the information and stuff. But...
And more itemized of what's brought in. Say it's on the back of that tree.
Maybe they can take a picture of the stuff.
Like if they have spool wire, you know, usually they strip it, they cut it, and they put it, you know, in piles that they can handle. If you get pictures of that, you know, we don't need them to set it off to the side just for that part.
Generally, if I'm taking a scrap pile in, I'm not gonna know it's on the top or bottom. It's scrap, you know, whether it's tires or rims or whether, whatever is in there. I've taken scrap in before, but it goes, again, it goes in that big pile that they have to do because you have to have cranes, you have to have service. You have to have individual employees try to sort that stuff and just try to keep that stuff separated.
And it's usually sorted correctly when it comes off, right? Like copper goes here.
If it's copper.
And then they send aluminum that way. So if it is, that's what I said. So it is separated. But then at that point, you kind of know. And when it's put on those tickets, it's specified.
I think, again, if you look at the average things that goes on here, let's just go with, for example, copper wire. I was on a NICD board, so it was a common thing for people to steal the whole wire, brand-new wire. So that's pretty obvious. Those are pictures. And everybody doesn't, they didn't record any of those that did receive that wire. Catalytic converters, right? They're just heavy hitters. But if I have a bunch of old refrigerators and stoves, that just seems ridiculous that you're gonna sit there and even tell me what to do with that stuff. Just throw it in a pile and call it a day, because it's, you know...
See, I have a dump trailer. And it's like, we collect all our scrap from the jobs. So, you know, I'll take that in every couple of months. So that's $300, $400 sometimes that you'll get. It's like, how do you have them keep that separate? I mean, it's like, that's, we just lift it up, they dump it, and go.
I kind of agree. That was one of the issues when we first reviewed it, was whether or not, how do you, because once the stuff, they scrap it, they're ripping it out. It's really, you're really looking for restitution at that point. looking for restitution at that point. So, I mean, we're willing, whatever the council wants to do, if you just want to take that out, that they don't have to hold it, as long as they take pictures...
You said reasonable, I just think it's unreasonable.
And that's fine, and, because what we're trying to do is, and I can just tell you from personal experience, that this helps solve a murder case that I tried, and it was the pawn shop that got the picture of the suspect and the videotape that we had that over in Porter County, that they had taken pictures, they had video, and we were able to get that. So it becomes very important, because the picture didn't match up to, we had another person that was identified based on Leads Online as a suspect, but when we pulled the video, we showed that, I'm like, wait a minute, that's not the same guy. He just handed his ID at the table, and that was, it was kind of a different thing. So this is really an important thing. When I, when I came into office, we upped it to include scrap. We paid for, you know, out of our infraction deferral, the Leads Online, because it costs about, I think it was, I think it was like $12,000, it's like $12,000 a year for us to pay. And it was one of these tools that really we thought would be a good idea. And the problem we had is, the only way that they're not doing this is to get a search warrant. And then you get a situation where if they're not going to enter it because they don't want to lose it, and we want to get them restitution, we also want to stop, but what we're happening is, the victims, they were saying, we're not going to give it back, we're not going to release this property unless we get paid. And so then you had victims having to pay to buy back their stuff, and we're like, wait a second, that's not right. You're both victims, and we're not going to victimize the original burglary, you know, victim, and then make, you know, them, but so we were getting restitution, that's what we're trying to do, but if they won't cooperate, and the pawn shops don't do it, we don't find out the information, now it just creates this big problem. And so you have an issue that, it really becomes very, very helpful to do this. And obviously, we're interested, as Jim was saying, to go, we're going to go to every, even if they don't have a pawn shop now, I've learned that in the future, they may get a pawn shop, because that's the place they'll locate their business, because they don't have to do this. So I want to go to every council, every, you know, entity, Trail Creek, and Westville, Kingsher Heights, and get this instituted there. And we want to start here, because this sets the tone, that if Lepore County's serious enough to institute this, then we can go to Lepore City next, we can go to Michigan City, we can go to each of the councils to really get this going, because I think it's going to stop this issue where people are stealing to support their drug habit. I mean, that's really one of the issues, is they're getting that quick turnaround, and then they're getting, we have a real problem now with meth. We've kind of made heroin go down, but meth is on the rise. So something, we really hope that you take this seriously and will help us, and we're willing to do whatever we can, just that we really need the leads and them to comply.
So what do you need us to do? To pass the ordinance?
Pass the ordinance.
Well, I think, it was a joint, it was a joint thing, it's really kind of for the commissioner.
It really is, yeah.
But also, obviously, then, when I come back, I just want approval to spend on Leads Online every year in my budget. I mean, obviously, we do it out of our infraction deferral, but that's kind of like the council, and I think also setting up the fines, and getting your feedback. I think that was the whole idea for the joint workshop, to get everybody on board.
Yes, sir. I'm not in favor of supporting scrap yards or anything like that, by the way, just because I just did it, but, so I have no experience with pawn shops, so I want to play ignorant in this conversation. So have you taken, since there is only three, have you sat down with the three and seen what was reasonable, that they say this may not work or could work?
How receptive, I guess.
How receptive are you working with these people? I know they don't want it, I get that. Do you say, hey, if you don't include this, we may just put the whole thing on you, and then they may start cooperating?
Well, and that really comes back to what we've discussed, is if we don't get cooperation, and they take in property that's stolen, and they're deliberately hiding it, in my opinion, we now are dealing with a crime.
But like, for one example that I gave you, I just know that one thing, what if they, they have a reasonable...
Well, and that's the thing, well, I mean, obviously, if we get feedback from them, and you open it up on an ordinance, if they come back and say, hey, 15 days is too much, 10 days or 5 days, what we're looking at is, our investigations normally take about two weeks before you do it, but if they're doing it, we can maybe shorten that window if they're doing it every day. If we're able to find out about the burglary and say, hey, we got this information, now we look on Leads Online, we missed a TV, we missed this and this person, all of a sudden, that stuff is popping up, we're able to solve a lot quicker. But reality is...
What I'd like to do is, like I said, 10 shiny reels of copper, you know, wire,